16 November 2016, and we'll push your exit. All stands. Please place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with the city planner, his last roll call.
Sure, with pleasure. Mr. Mr. Eggleston.
Weggleston, here.
Mr. Eggleston, Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Tally.
Here.
Chair Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
There are no special orders of business tonight. I would like to have discussed the minutes of the planning commission meeting of November 2nd. There's one spelling error change, I think, in there that I saw. Five minutes. Where are we here in the book? There we go. On page three of the T-zone update. One, two, three, four, five. Five bullets down, just instead of our should be our court, management efforts are coordinated, instead of our our coordinated. Page three.
Page three, fifth one down, one, two, three, four, five.
Public works, so parking management efforts are coordinated, not our coordinated. Just change.
Oh, A R E. Is this the beginning of the end? Oh, my goodness.
You are TV personality tonight, Madam Secretary. Okay. If there's any more other discussions on the minutes of November 2nd. If not, any more discussion, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the adjourned regular meeting of the City of Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, November 2nd, with corrections as indicated by Commissioner Brown.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Commissioner Blackwell, moved by Commissioner Crandall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, so it passes six. Six zero one. Six zero one. I had the number right, you just stepped in too fast. Okay, with that, we'll meet, move into oral-written communication. Members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on our agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Do we have any cards?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, we'll move on. There's no items on our consent calendar, so we'll move out to item, public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. On the close of the public hearing, the planning commissioner will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss issues, and act upon the matter by motion. Item 8A is discretionary sign permit amendment 11-509, De La Australia Plaza, 504 North Avenue de la Australia. And that was continued from the 19th of October.
Okay, this item is being requested by the applicant due to a personal issue to be tabled, so staff recommends the item be tabled.
I want to entertain a motion to table the item.
Some of them.
Some of them. I guess.
Second.
Okay, by Tally, second by Crandall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes seven zero. With that, we'll move on to item B, 8B, general plan amendment 16374, zoning amendment 16375, general plan and zoning cleanup. Be famous, Mr. Wright.
Good evening, Planning Chair, Commissioners, Christopher Wright, project planner. So, a continued effort to update our zoning ordinance, civic plans, be consistent with the general plan. And the city council is part of its strategic implementation plan, and approval of the budget had prioritized this work, so it's a continued part of this project. The scope of this amendment would include general plan changes, map, general plan land use changes, zoning ordinance changes, and then zoning map changes that I'll discuss. So the recommendation tonight is for the planning commission to forward a recommendation to the city council that includes two things, to find that the project doesn't require additional environmental review under the Environmental Quality Act, and then, secondly, to adopt a resolution recommending the city council adopt the proposed ordinance and map changes and general plan changes. So the first main issue is related to open space easements. If you recall, last year, we staff had presented a number of map changes that had tried to align, in some cases, the open space areas in line with recorded open space easements. And through a recent review of a building permit, we came to understand that some of the documents that were used to do that work last year actually don't show the current boundary of some easement. So, there's going to be a need to update some of those boundary lines in the subsequent map changes that we'll bring to the commission later on. But for now, to allow for effective implementation of the general plan and to review projects, we're proposing some changes that I have right here. So, one is to add a standard to the zoning ordinance, and I'll show that to you, and then a reference in the general plan to that standard. And what the standard on the left, it's all about, it just says that when there's a difference between a recorded open space easement line and the land use map, that you would use the easement as the guiding document, because it's prepared by a licensed surveyor. It's got a higher level of precision to define, for the purpose of running with the property legally, where that open space is to be maintained. Now, if you recall, there was a measure V in the City of San Clemente, and so to ensure that in no case would the land use go beyond the open space that existed prior to measure V, I have a little reference in there to account for that. There's a change in the general plan that we're proposing, and the growth management element, that's a follow-up to some discussion that we had with the city council on a recent development project called the Riot Reyes project. And so, we had noticed that one of the policies related to infill development was not in a location that really was consistent with the intent of that policy, didn't didn't work well. So, we actually presented some draft text to the city council, and they directed staff to pursue it, so we have that as part of this project. We have some changes related to the affordable housing overlay. The first one are some map changes. So, the intent of the affordable housing overlay is to facilitate projects in commercial and mixed-use zones. Not, there's not a need to have this for residential zones. There's a couple residential lots that are in the overlay, and we're proposing to remove those, because it doesn't, there's not a need to allow affordable housing there. And then to update use tables to coincide with the boundaries of the overlay. So, this is a cleanup from the ordinance last year, and to clean up the overlay text to read a little easier. So what I have here is just one really minor thing that I want to pass around. So the, the affordable housing overlay, let me point you to a map in the staff report. If you go on the bottom right corner, there's a page number, so it's going to be page 24. It shows where the boundary of the the commercial zones and mixed-use zones in the overlay. I know it's a little hard to read, but it will do the job for me to talk tonight. So, if you look at the blue areas, and, so there's the dark blue and then the lighter blue areas.
Okay.
Has everybody seen that map? It looks like this.
Yeah.
So the dark blue and the light blue areas, there's a number of commercial zones and mixed-use zones. This this sheet that I just passed out to you includes a change to the commercial zones to follow the boundary that you're seeing on that map for the overlay. So that would include NC 1.2 zones, in addition to the other zones that are in the table that I I just gave you. Just a cleanup. Are there any questions before I move forward on that?
Okay. Any questions from, okay, continue.
And the last set of changes relate to some prior amendments. Oftentimes, when you're drafting an extensive list of changes, you have to go back at times and clean it up. So, there's a couple cleanups in here that are described in my staff report. I can go in more detail if you'd like, answer questions. But that concludes my presentation. I also have the maps in my report, if you want me to go over the the individual changes that are shown there.
Any questions of staff on any of the subjects on this fairly minor change at all? Mr. Eggleston, we'll start from the right and move around.
Yes, both of those issues up there, neon signs and increasing the retaining wall standards, could you talk about those?
Sure.
Let me go to the page here that shows the changes. So if you go to page 41.
Yep.
It's going to show the code amendments.
Changes, yeah. That's the one I always go to first, anyway.
So in one case, there was an ordinance adopted, I think it was in 2011, that had a number of cleanup items, and ironically, there's a need to make cleanup to the cleanup items here. So, what happened was, we had simplified the the matrix of all the different sign types. It really didn't make sense, it had lighting types and additional types of signs. So we simplified it, and there was a reference, sometimes in zoning ordinances, there's a reference from one section to another, and that wasn't copied forward to the particular permit type that's required for a sign permit. So all we're doing is we're putting that back in here for areas that aren't in the architectural overlay. So that's the first change. Any questions on that?
So for, for example, on the retaining wall standards, up to a maximum height of six feet, the walls located in front yards, rear yards, or through lots, are located within five feet of the street side property lines.
Yes, so it's just rewording that to be consistent with the policy intent and the practice that's been in place for years, since 1996 at least. So we're not, there's no change to policy, it's to reverse some changes that were included in a prior ordinance.
Okay.
So can I give you an example?
Certainly.
Instead of going through all of them? So if you look at the the second one, the number two, you'll see the red text that's crossed out. It says, the retaining wall not located, and then later on, it says, and rear yard setback for through lots, and there's a number of setbacks that it's mentioning. Well, that also applies when it's not, the way that it's been in effect for years is, when it's not in a setback, you could also apply for this, not just when it's in setback areas, which would make sense. If anything, you'd want to encourage it not to be in the setbacks. So that's an example.
Correct. That makes sense to me, not put it in.
I mean, not have it in a setback.
Well, but it's ambiguous language that you're cleaning up to be less ambiguous.
Yes, that's right.
The lawyer in me kind of looks at that and goes, okay, it's more precise.
Yes.
But it doesn't functionally change anything.
Correct.
And neon signs?
Neon signs restores what existed prior, where you needed discretionary sign permit to have a neon sign citywide. That's how it's been for years. When we made the cleanup in 2011, it it didn't include a reference to a section, so it reads right now like you only need a permit in the architectural overlay district.
I see, all right.
Now we're moving it up to the entire city wing.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So that's more restrictive.
Yes.
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 That's the way, that's the intent. That's the way it's been.
That's the intent of the neon sign thing.
An air.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackwell, you were on for a while, are you happy?
My question was asked, I'm happy.
Okay, Mr. Wu.
A few miscellaneous questions. Residential parcel with open space easement, so in our zoning map, does that mean we have one parcel with two zones?
Correct.
Okay. How does that work? So if someone looked up the parcel and said, what is the zone?
We had an interesting discussion that about a year and a half ago, let me tell you, this is the second time around on this, so it's, but if you look at the charts that were provided, and there were lots that were bisected.
Right, right. How soon is the last?
In fact, the maps we looked at about two years ago, the 1968 versions were very illuminating, topographical maps, where somebody took a ruler and drew straight lines through the back of the, to the lot. And so we had a huge issue with that, that was clarification, and this is a very elegant way to clarify it.
Are those open space, privately owned open space underneath easement, are they subject to measure V?
Yes. To measure V at the time, so the open space that were shown, was shown on these maps at the time of measure V, that's that's what's grandfathered. That's the point where you can't remove open space from that point.
Measure V, can you tell me the code of reference for the measure V?
I have the ordinance number.
Right.
Is that what you're asking?
14 something.
That's in the the change there. Actually, I could go back, it's in here. So it's ordinance 1475.
1475.
Yes.
Okay. And then, and secondly, I noticed that you changed the zone for that someone partnership parcel to residential law, which is, which shut me down a long time ago, yeah, so that's a good one.
Yes.
Hospital, you have a medical office overlay, is hospital site in that overlay area?
No.
Separate zone.
It's a separate zoning, okay.
Yes, there are no changes to that, that area. Yeah.
And then lastly, we talked about retaining wall height, does it apply to slope?
It apply, it's measured, are you wondering where it's measured to?
No, if someone had, instead of a vertical wall, if someone has a mechanically stabilized or engineered slope, manufactured slope.
Okay.
It doesn't. It's it's a vertical wall only.
Yes.
Okay.
It's measured from the the lower side of finished ground.
What if someone have a tiered wall with a landscaped bench in the middle, or maybe a bench drain in the middle and some landscaping in there?
It's measured to the the grade below the wall, so the finished grade.
If a manufacturer wall become very steep and close to be a wall, how do you differentiate that?
We have a definition of retaining wall in the code. That that won't be changing.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Not to close that and open the public hearing? Anybody wish to comment? Not will close the public hearing and go into discussion. From my perspective, this is a fairly simple code change. The open space thing we discussed for about two hours, two years ago, with several maps, there were 1968 minigees, and worked our way through some interpret, this is very elegant and simple until he can get the maps updated, which will take a while. Most of the other changes, some are fairly recent, like Reyes initial down there, where we we missed the area about infill development, which was a good catch by staff. So I think most of these things are fairly simple going forward, and I'm going to support staff on their changes along, including with the table change here on commercial zones and residential uses. Any other comments from?
A member of the public left that in regard to this particular item.
Oh, okay, so we do have a, a public comment, so I guess I'm going to need to reopen it. Public comment. Planning Commission, due to a conflict with a BPR meeting, I'm submitting my concerns about the general plan amendment of open space, item 8B, Mr. Don Kunsy. Okay, and. So he is underlining the land use zone of the general plan. Traditional land use element is considered the general plan's underlying most important policy, and one of those includes underlying open space. The land use element provides more detailed goals and policies for focus areas following the 1993 general plan, which is underlined. Primary goals, five, is protected open space in natural resource areas. And then. He uses a land use map, land use map number one. It's in the general plan, but not before us tonight. Underline open space public own and open space privately own, question mark. And with handwriting on the bottom of that map, Rancho San Clemente Trail and Marblehead Bluff Trail. And then finally, exhibit A, table Lu 1, for open space public and open space OS2 private. Intention, public own existing and dedicated parklands and underline passive open, underline spaces and open space public, with notes at the bottom, density does affect public health, safety, and welfare, building height, and open space, question mark. That's some of the comments. Would you like to look at this? Mr. City Planner, maybe, or a city attorney? I'm not quite sure what Mr. Kunsy had in mind.
Do you have any questions about this?
I.
I, I think he was concerned that the adjustments in the easement may have, you know, effects on open space and reducing open space when it really is just reflecting what the actual open space is.
Right.
Actually, in many cases, it extends the open space more than it is now, so.
Well, we're going to go with a survey, which is in the deeds and entitlement, which.
And in no case would it be beyond what was approved when the voters.
Of measure V.
Approved measure V.
So I think, I think you've covered it pretty well, if that's his concern.
Yeah, last year, when we did those map changes, it added open space on almost every one of those properties.
Right.
Or it kept it the same.
So I think, I think you got it covered, I think we've met the intent of measure V, and we certainly met the intent of the landowners with, by going, what's in their entitlement documents and their, and the surveys of each lot, so. And then all we have to do now is wait to get the maps caught up, which is going to take some time, I know.
Sure, I, I think it would be a good time for me to mention to you the plan, so the the intent is to return to the planning commission early next year with. So the, the intent is to return to the Planning Commission early next year with code amendments and, if necessary, general plan amendment cleanups to make the zoning consistent with the general plan. Then we'll proceed in another round to do the specific plans, and a number of implementation type code changes would be after that. So with the resources we have right now and making sure that you don't have to consider too much at one time, that's our, that's our approach, to get it done as quick as we can.
Well, your last effort was 800 pages, but we're used to that, that's not a problem.
Yeah. Well, I can, we can arrange that if you like.
By law, how many general plan changes can you make per year?
Four.
So we need to use our bullets sparingly?
There is a.
We don't want to run out of ammunition here.
There is some research that we're doing with the city attorney's office and a way to batch up general plan amendments so that we don't run into any limitations with the number per year. So something we're looking into, but I can't give you.
Okay.
An answer on that. But we're, we're being careful, we'll make sure that there's not a problem.
So your intent going forward is some small, a small general plan amendment zoning changes after the first of the year?
Yes.
And then look at some specific plans?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Maybe you've done public outreach on two that I know of, right? Oss Molinos and the Pier Bowl.
Yes.
And working our way on some of the other ones, I guess, as the workload permits, as remanded?
Yeah, so we'll be at a minimum updating all the land use maps for each specific plan to be in GIS.
Okay.
And so naturally, when you do that, you're lining up things and you find errors. So we'll clean those up, and, and then there's a number of changes that were made in the general plan, so we'll be updating them to be consistent.
Okay.
And we do intend to have some outreach with the ranch areas, so Toleda, I've been in contact with them.
Okay.
And I'll show up at one of their board meetings, and I intend to do that with Forrester Ranch and Rancho San Clemente.
All, all, all the specific plans. And then kind of get them as far as we can until we get some feedback from Coastal Commission, I guess.
Yes.
Which kind of drives everything.
Yes.
And do we have anything to illuminate us on the land, on the Coastal Commission efforts?
Well, the good news is that we finally got assigned an analyst to review our LUP.
Oh, they haven't read it yet.
And they've asked for a kickoff meeting with Cecilia and our staff to, you know, discuss the approach and hopefully give us a schedule, which we've been asking for. And the target date, you know, the likelihood, I don't know how, how high it is, but the target date has been February of next year for the review to public hearing.
They've only had it 10 months, so we don't want to rush things here.
Well, they're going to, they're going to use the time they have available to do the analysis.
I'm so glad we had like seven, seven weekly meetings in a row about a year and a half ago.
But again, the good news is they do, they finally have somebody that is actually going to be working on it and dedicated to do that, which is a big step. And that kickoff meeting is important, so I anticipate something early next year to start seeing and getting feedback. Typically, what they'll do is they'll work with us on the suggested mods so that they'll give us a heads up on what we're going to get before we get it, so that it isn't a surprise to us when it goes to the Coastal Commission for determination. And as you recall, we concluded our STLU ordinance as part of this review, so we would give feedback on that. So anyway, just expect something the first of the year, it is, you know, it's all tied together, it's all integral. Just so you know, too, that I was, I talked to Cecilia and Chris about our approach. This is a lot of stuff. So we plan on bringing these things to you in groups that make sense, so that you don't have to review 800 pages at a time. So it's digestible and you can make better decisions. So expect it to come with, you know, the kind of the consistency, the zoning ordinance stuff that Jim Hare and Chris have been working on as one thing, the specific plans, probably the ranchland area, specific plans in another wave, and then the more, probably the Pier Bowl might even go by itself because it's usually more controversial, so.
It's the oldest and probably needs the most work. With that, if there's any other discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Amendment 16 dash 375 and zoning map amendments to clarify policy intent by fixing errors, clarifying, reversing unintended changes made previously, and adding standards to provide guidance on an open space easements.
A motion by Commissioner Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wu, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes 7-0. Oh, the easiest amendment you've ever had.
It is, actually, it's probably one of the easiest.
Six and a half years I've been here.
Can, can you also go on the record regarding the errata?
Okay, let's go on the record that, yes, the errata sheet that was entered into includes the errata sheet, I believe. So to, do you need this? Okay.
Thank you.
And then, do we want to amend, amend the, the motion and include the errata sheet that was provided by staff?
That's correct, Mr. Chapman.
So, so we'll amend the motion by Commissioner Smith and a second by Wu to include the errata sheet provided by staff at the briefing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. With that, we'll move on to the general plan amendment, items 8C, general plan amendment 15311, housing element update by the famous Amber Gregg.
You all can do it, okay.
I'll save you this one. Good evening, planning commissioners, Amber Gregg, project planner. We were hoping to bring you the housing element update tonight, but unfortunately, we received comments from HCD a little later than anticipated, noticing had to go out fairly early for this. So unfortunately, we're asking to table it to a later date, and we'll renotice it at that time.
Okay. So I need a motion to table item 8C, general plan amendment 15311, housing element update. Do I have a motion? So move. Okay, a motion by Commissioner Eggers, and a second by Mr. Crandall, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. There are, is no new business, no old business, reports of commissioners and staff.
I think our community development director would like to make a report.
I think there's a tentative staff input here by Ms. Giallo Daily.
Hi, good evening, Chairman Brown, members of the commission. Well, first, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Jim for all his years of service and for his love of and commitment to San Clemente. That is certainly reflected in all his accomplishments as a planner in the city for the last 31 years, so thank you, Jim, we'll miss you.
Here, here. Absolutely awesome.
With Mr. Petch's imminent exit, I wanted to update the commission on our plans to address not only Jim's departure, but some recent vacancies that we've had in the planning division. Our ability to process projects and prepare plans and policies for your consideration directly affects your role as commissioner, so I wanted to assure you that we'll do our best to continue to keep your dockets full of items. So what are we doing, how are we doing it? First order of business is team staff. One contractual staff person will be devoted to the LUP so that when we do get comments back from the commission, we can, the coastal commission staff, we can just pick up where we left off and continue down that path. And the other contractual staff person will help us with the project processing, so all the discretionary plans that come in for review, that person will be assigned to those, and we'll be working at sort of the senior planner level, so we'll be taking on some of the more complex projects. We currently have three vacant positions in the planning division. We are in the process of filling two of those vacant positions. And with this recruitment, we're going to use that eligibility list to hire for the third position in the future. We had put on hold the filling of vacant planner positions in the summertime when Matrix Consulting Group began a study of the planning division, but at that time, we only had one vacancy in the planning division, and now we have three vacancies. So with that, we're moving forward on filling vacant positions. Matrix will have recommendations that affect staffing in the planning division. Those recommendations don't impact the number of positions per se in terms of reductions, but there are reclassifications. So as soon as we take the Matrix report to council, which we expect to be at their January meeting, then we can follow that up with continuing to, to fill the remainder of the vacancies and staff up the planning division. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? I think she has a plan going forward, and we'll have to cooperate and help during these lean times, and Jim, we're really going to miss you. Great, great ride, what a great month.
Well, I'm going to really miss everybody. It's been a pleasure working here and working with each one of the planning commissioners and the planning commissioners through my.
Well, two or 300 of us over the last 30 years, I'm sure.
So you guys do a great job, and it's, you know, almost, it's a, it's a thankless job, it doesn't pay much, but you guys are really dedicated and, and do a great job in the service for the community, and I'm proud to serve you guys, so. Good luck in the future, you're in great, great hands with Amber, I know she'll do a great job as my replacement, and Cecilia will, you know, she'll fill the team back up and they'll be running stronger than ever.
Good. You had a great team working with you there for many years, that's good. Testimony to your leadership.
And I'd just like to say, we're, certainly, I think everybody would say we're going to be working with Cecilia and Amber and look forward to the new adventure.
Great. We are, too.
There is a farewell to Petch tomorrow night, and Veronica's going to send it to me electronically and I'll forward it to all the commissioners that said, but Barona Wine Company in Toleda started at 5:30, so if your schedule permits, why stop by and watch the roasting?
Can anybody say bad about me? Who can have a story about me?
I've never heard a bad word about him. But I, I do have a question for Amber. Is there going to be a design review next Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving?
I think Jim has a TFA in his.
It shows, it shows one, I don't know if anything's on the agenda, because I will be traveling.
Okay. I don't think we have anything on there, but since he has it with him, we can double check.
There is one scheduled, but there's no agenda for it.
I was going to say, I don't think there's any items on it.
Okay.
So we can go ahead and cancel that.
Very good.
But we'll verify with you tomorrow if we can't.
Okay. Acting planner.
No, there's nothing on it.
Okay.
Staff, acting planner is stepping into the breach.
Yeah.
Any reports of commissioners from?
Yes, I do. The coastal advisory committee met on November 10th, and the meeting was very interesting, and I'll walk you through just what we discussed. The bacteriological report came in, typical violators, poachy beach and pier. There was discussion about the netting mitigation that I'd mentioned to you before. Cynthia Mallett is doing some fact finding on that, and we still have yet to decide whether or not that's going to be a viable solution. And that would really restrict the roosting of the birds under the pier, which are the major contributor to the high bacterial counts at that, at that testing point. The sand replenishment project is underway, and we received the approvals necessary to move forward with it, so they're going to start dumping sand soon. Within a couple weeks, we should start to see some sand north beach. And then finally, the Trafalgar Canyon project was presented by staff, and the findings were that there might be some mitigation that we could do initially and possibly handle this in steps. Step one would be to clear out the energy dissipator that's currently full, clean up the surrounding area, improve flow, reduce ponding, which was a concern initially for vector issues, bless you. So that first step is going to be attempted and evaluated, and based on that evaluation, a memo would be presented to city management for further steps to, to further improve the situation there.
A year and a half in the making.
Yeah, it's a long one. But it looks like something's happening, which is, which is a good thing. The CAC also discussed environmental sustainability grants that are currently available. There's a deadline, and that deadline is December 15th. As you recall, we, the city granted two such grants this last year, and now it's time to reapply. And more information can be found at www.sccleanocean.org. And future agenda items, in December, we may get into the long and short term beach erosion and structural protection of the beach facilities, potential poachy landfill, land outfall diversion, and also in December, possibly discussing ways to improve outreach via social media, Facebook, et cetera. And late spring, we might see a presentation on Montaville Canyon Outlet Study. So we'll be looking forward to that, that's another one that's been in the making for quite some time. And the next CAC meeting will occur on December 8th, 2016, at 7:00 PM at the Ole Hanson Fireside Room located at the San Clemente Community Center.
Okay. One small item for me, I got an email from, from the city traffic engineer, Tom Frank, and he's going to make a report to city council in, in the first meeting in December. And at that time, with the concurrence of the city council members, Don Chick and Brown, they'll probably recommend sunsetting the traffic task force, the objectives have been met. That's the only thing I'd like to pass on.
Very good. I'd just like to give everybody a heads up, we had our first presentation of the Miramar North Beach Project at design review. It's scheduled to come back, we're making sure that for all items under the purview of design review, we're crossing the Ts, dotting the Is, and making sure everything's correct before it comes up. So that will be coming forward at near future, and it's an exciting project.
Get your microscopes out and look at it closely. With that, if there's no other things to, to discuss, they are canceling the next normal meeting of the Planning Commission, so we're going to adjourn to the 21st of December. And so with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. The next meeting is the 21st of December. Yeah, the 7th December meeting will be canceled. The 7th December meeting is going to be canceled, and we're adjourning tonight to 21 December at 6:00 PM.
Okay, I move, I move we adjourn to the adjourned regular Planning Commission meeting to be held at 6:00 PM on December 21st in council chambers at City Hall located at 100 Avenue de Presidio, San Clemente, California.
Motion adjourned by Crandall, a second?
Second.
Second by Smith, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 7-0.
Yay! Applause. [applause][1763.51]